September 2nd, 2025. Some order.
Not the name was listed.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Douglas.
Here.
He says.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
All members are present.
Your motion to approve the agenda.
I move second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
He says.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath. Yes. This is sense.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Here is five zero.
All right, first thing under board member reports, we have Reno here from the Ohio School Board Association.
I'm real kind of fight for the House School Board Association, the Northeast Regional Manager. First of all, thank you for being members and thank you for being board members. Anything you need to comment, just let me know or call down there. It will provide you the service. Each year at spring conference, we like to award board members through long term of service. We started at 10 years initially, we had somebody actually go up to 45.
Wow.
Wow. I had a 52 one time.
Wow.
He may have been 52 years on.
No.
He was on local, he wasn't on ESC, which is easy. He was actually on a local, Austin town.
Wow, that whole time?
The whole time. He was kind of going off of JBS and ESC as double duty.
That's amazing.
I know. Yeah, I can't imagine being, I did 20 on my local, aged me like 20 years. I was so happy to get off it. My wife was even more happy. But I stopped by here because you guys missed it.
I was a ringing endorsement, wasn't it?
We started at 10 years. To put it in perspective, there are about 3,500 board members. About 50% usually don't run for reelection or can't, or can't get reelected out of the first term. So you do 10 years, we really like to stop by and say congratulations on 10 years. Thank you for all the time that you put into Madison schools and time away from your family, your job. Mr. Douglas, congratulations on 10 years of service.
Thank you.
And then we have one overachiever that did 15 years. And I've known Michelle for a long time. I remember Michelle, you have a standing reservation going to back on the Northeast Executive Lake, Verzane Lake County. We'd love to have you back. So, but 15 years is even more incredible because we have to be elected a few more times. So congratulations on 15 years. And if you guys are doing anything, October 1st is our fall conference. You're more than welcome to come down here. If not, not by Capitol Conference, I'll make moves and say hi. Congratulations on both your long term of service and good luck to you for reelection.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are there any board members wishing to give a report this evening?
I might just wanted to focus in on our cover here. What is from the Madison Middle School 7th grade art class? So did the entire art class work on this?
This was a project that students were doing. I believe that my administrative assistant took a photo that I used.
Mm hmm. Here it is.
Which is really nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were displaying them throughout the.
Yeah, a lot of times it will say the name of the student that did it. So I'm, I'm wondering if maybe there wasn't multiple students that had worked on this one.
Yeah.
But it's good artwork. Very nice. That's all.
Well, no, then this weekend I had the opportunity to help support the kindergarten team with foot and landscaping block. I don't have any skills, but one of them is putting in landscaping blocks. They did a real nice job, the teachers did, of setting up a kindergarten corner over there. Then this weekend we finished it up with blocks. Appreciate the opportunity to help with that. So it's very nice. It's awesome.
Oh, I do have one other thing. So as many of you know, I have waited through four kids that went through Madison schools, okay, all the way kindergarten to graduation. All four of them would not play in the band. Finally, thank God for grandchildren. I finally have a grandchild in the marching band and I am so excited. And they were absolutely fantastic Friday night. Fantastic. So, yeah. And of course, our football game did, you know. She plays trumpet.
Our Ash who plays the two buns one.
Ah, yeah, no, and she loves it too. She's a freshman. It's, you know, her first year in marching band, but I think she'll stick with it. She loves it. Yeah. And so, yeah.
Our band is a lot bigger than Perry's. I just wanted to say.
Our band is bigger than a lot of other bands. And, and they looked good and they sounded good. And that last song that they did where they were all dancing, that was absolutely fantastic. Yep.
I think at one point, it might still be true, almost 20, 20 to 25% of the kids in the high school were in the marching band.
Yeah, that is true.
It's huge.
Yeah, it's incredible. Yeah, it's about 25%. I'm sorry, I was trying to do the math.
Yeah. I saw it. And a former language arts teacher. So it took an extra minute. All right, we don't have anyone registered for public participation. So reports and recommendations of the treasurer.
Thank you. Item seven is a resolution to do some very generous donations. First of all, take a step back. Financial reports for August, obviously being September 2nd, we didn't have time to provide those this meeting. They will be submitted for the next meeting. Anyways, the donations include donation of school supplies from Great Day Childcare Learning Center to North Elementary School to be used as needed. Generous donation of school supplies from Hope Ridge United Methodist Church, valued at $200. North Elementary School to be used as needed. Generous donation of $750 from Brian Horvath in Carmuse to North Elementary Kindergarten to be used for kindergartners' needs. Another generous donation from Brian Horvath in Carmuse to Madison Middle School to be used for the Madison Middle School streak of the month. A generous donation of $500 from Herb Plumbing, Heating and Air to Madison Middle School to be used for the MNST streak of the month. A generous donation of 200 water bottles from Kim Miller Schwab at Central Congregational Church to Brooklyn Elementary School to be used for student needs. Lastly, generous donation of $500 from Madison Family Restaurant to Madison Pre-K to be used for screening needs. I may recommend the board accept these donations.
I'll move. One second.
Any discussion?
Thank you very much for the donations. And I wonder if I was, if this Kim Miller is who I was behind in the Walmart checkout line because the lady, whoever it was, was buying a ton of water bottles. So, yeah, thank you for the donation.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
He says.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath. Yes. Sensei.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Wish to carry spice here.
Right, reports of the administrative team.
Yes, let's turn it over to Dave. Okay. Well, this is one of those fingers crossed things. We submitted a grant application to the Bureau of Workers Comp. It's a school safety. I gotta look, make sure I get the S's correctly. School Safety and Security Grant, SSSG Grant. This grant is, they'll match every dollar we spend with $3 of theirs. So it's a pretty good deal. One of the allowable uses is for security cameras for school buses. So our, most of our cameras on our school buses have become obsolete. So it's, we've been looking for an opportunity to try to, you know, find some funds to replace those. We did write for it. So we're hoping, fingers crossed, maybe we'll get that and be able to reoutfit those buses. If not, we'll continue to.
Come on, cameras last on a bus.
Oh, the ones we had were, we had forever. So I mean, we've had as long as I've been here and they were here long before I was here as well. So it's really the ability to kind of communicate between, you know, viewing what's, what's coming on those or the cameras themselves. And you know, the quality was decreasing, the sound within there was decreasing. What we would get with the application that we wrote based on the amounts that, that were available, we would get 20 of our 30 buses outfitted with four cameras in different locations from within real high, high definition quality videos. So, and audio. So hopefully we need it. So we're, we're hoping that this comes through.
Upgrade from the eight track system we have now.
Slightly after the tracks.
And Dave, did you write the grant?
Well, it was not a difficult grant to write. I filled out the application. Yeah, it was not. Yeah, it was, they, they didn't make, this was one, this wasn't one of the ones that required 40 pages of writing. But I filled it out.
Well, I appreciate.
Thank you for that.
Speaking of safety, our safety committee met for the first time with Mr. Rambler on board. And that, that committee involves all of the administrators from the district as well as representatives from both Madison Village and Madison Township Police Department, Fire Department. So we had a group of, of maybe 12, 15 people in here on Friday afternoon. We have annual safety plans that we work on and submit to the state. We reviewed our safety plans. We talked about what kinds of drills we needed to do this year. There are, there are different types of drills that you have to do every, every so often. So our, our school resource officer, school resource officers help us make sure that we're compliant with those. This year we are doing functional drills. What that basically means is you take a regular drill and you alter one piece of it so that you have to react. You have to react to something different or something unexpected. And so that's, that's what's going to be happening, happening in our buildings this year. We were lucky. We have a, we have a really, really good working relationship with all of our safety teams here in Madison. It's been that way as long as I've been here. And it's just, it's just nice because you know, everyone is helpful. Everyone's looking to, each year, let's improve something else. Let's see if we keep getting better and better each year.
That's all I have to.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Just had a couple of things that I might. Just going back to Friday and it really was a wonderful atmosphere with our student athletes and our band and cheerleaders and fans. Even, you know, students that were watching the game, but also active in other things too at the game. It's a really great atmosphere on a Friday night. And it is really phenomenal. You, you know, talked about the number, the percentage of band members of the high school and you actually count up all the students involved in that event from the band, cheerleaders, football players, like all of them. You're pushing 35% of the high school, which is pretty amazing when you think about it. It also leaves a smaller percentage that could be fans of the student section. But it really, it was a great event. It was wonderful to be able to see the various community members and families or representation there as well. So it was a great, it was a great time, great, great atmosphere. The other thing I wanted to mention was just thanking the board for all the support that they each individually and collectively do for the district. It's, being a board member is a lot of work. I think that, you know, they each demonstrate that passion for the district or students and go, much like I say all the time, like our staff, they go above and beyond, make sure that we're doing everything.
Thank you. Thank you. And I very much enjoyed watching you twirl the baton Friday evening as well. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Is there film?
Is there video on that?
This video. I was able to faster the twirling and was able to catch it from another student throw. No black eye or anything.
Speaking of workers' compensation.
Years ago, we had a young lady that would light them on fire and twirl. But I always thought that was so amazing that she could do that.
Some of them do, I did learn that night that some of them do compete in something else where they do that, but not as part of the school. We don't have insurance for all that.
No lighting on fire. No fire, thank you.
Not again. All right, we're ready for the recommendations.
Number nine, we have a number of items listed under number one. Excepting the following resignations, we have two resignations. Lauren from the payroll specialist and Brenna as a autism aid. B, you'll also see under, I'm sorry, I'm using letters, under B, that individual is also recognized in the second item as well. So number two is entering into a So number two is entering into employment contracts as follows. Number one is Brooklyn Miller as a special need assistant at the Madison High School. Number two, sorry, B, excuse me, as an employee. Dart Wadley as the nutrition services substitute. C, letter C, is Maya Gusi as the AM 3K classroom assistant. D, to employ Brenda Stevens, which I identified in number one as an aide to the autism unit. She was employed for just a few days and then resigned. E is the approval of the following substitute teachers as nominated by the Educational Service Center of Western Reserve and the Madison Middle School District for a one-year limited substitute contract. F, the following personnel, certified personnel are each employed under a one-year limited supplemental contract for the 25, 26 contract year in the position of rate as listed below. There are a number of individuals listed there. Letter G, the following non-certified persons under a one-year limited personnel service contract for the 25, 26 school year for the position of rate of compensation listed below. There are two individuals listed there. H to employ Marilyn Crane under a long-term substitute contract from August 15th through June 1st to perform duties of the pre-K intervention specialist pursuant to the higher vice code. Those are all presented for your consideration and approval.
I'll move. One second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
He says.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mr. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Harris, five zero.
Number 10, the consent calendar. There are four items here. A is the approval of revisions to the 25, 26 Madison High School student handbooks as found on the bio of the board office. B, authorizing me to dispose of property in accordance with the Higher Vice Code and other applicable policies and statutes. There's P gravel that's located on this premises that's no longer usable. It was initially intended for playgrounds. It's no longer acceptable to be used in playgrounds through conversations with our buildings and grounds individuals. We don't have any use for it. We were going to dispose of that. C is to approve a trip to reschedule for June 22nd through July 1st of 2028 for Madison Middle School students pursuant to board policy to authorize superintendent to impose a student participation fee of the amount of $5,749 per student. D is to enter into the consulting services contract with Mary Ellen Esser for trauma behavioral specialist services at a rate not exceed $20,000 for the 25, 26 school year. These are presented for your consideration.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
He says.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
This is sense.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Harris, five zero.
We do not have a need for executive session? All right, we have motion for adjournment?
I'll move. One second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
He says.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
This is sense.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Harris, five zero.
All right, we are adjourned.